Good evening, everyone. At Monday, September 18th, 7:00 PM here in City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. Call the meeting to order and entertain the roll call, please.
Bofor.
Here.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Peggus.
Roffey.
Here.
Schneider.
And welcome back to our guest council member.
Thank you.
Rule. Thank you. Join me for NMC, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all. We'll move right into Section D, approval of the agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Myers. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to Section E, approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion there.
I will move approval of September 11th, 2023, right in the meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Roffey. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F is our public comments for items not on the agenda. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move right into our one public hearing of the evening. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1132, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of property located at 717 West Bremer Avenue from R4 multi-family residential transitional district to C1 commercial district. Mayor and City Council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed and the following action will be considered. Have you received any written or oral comments, Carla?
We have none, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments from anybody that has joined us this evening? Seeing nobody rise, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move to approve second reading of ordinance 1132, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of property located at 717 West Bremer Avenue from R4 multiple-family residential transitional district to C1 commercial district.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bofor. Council discussion, if any? And this is the St. Andrews Church Building and Lot. Hearing nothing. Roll call, Carla.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergin.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Peggus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, and the second reading of ordinance 1132 is approved. Brings us to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is the pay request from Studio Mealy for the Waverly Public Library addition and renovation for $14,616.50. Item two is a pay request from Wick's Construction for the Airport Taxway Connector 2022 for the amount of $71,322.49. Item three is a new special Class C retail alcohol license application for Waverly Bowl Inn. Item four is a special Class C retail alcohol five-day license application for Waverly Oktoberfest. And item five is cash disbursement for August of 2023. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries on the consent calendar. Into regular business, item number one is Resolution 23-137, a resolution approving the airport manager agreement and airport fixed base operator FBO agreement for the Waverly Municipal Airport. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-137, a resolution approving the airport manager agreement and airport fixed base operator FBO agreement for the Waverly Municipal Airport.
Second.
Motion by Bergin, second by Roffey. Council discussion, if any?
I can give a little bit of background on this, and if I say something incorrectly or leave something out, we have Dennis Hansen, who's the chair of our Airport Commission hearing, and can fill in the blanks. This is to extend, basically to amend and extend the current FBO agreement. We had a five-year agreement originally with Irv Sweeter to be the FBO and also the airport manager, and this extends this for an additional five years. Just a little bit of background here, the FBO or fixed base operator is the company that runs the airport, the airport part of it. They sell fuel, they do maintenance and repair on airplanes, they rent airplanes, they do things that basically run the airport. Airport manager is the organization that takes care of the airport itself. So you've got building maintenance, snow removal, repairing roofs, doing that kind of thing. That's what the manager does. And the reason they're in two contracts is that for larger airports, it's not unusual to have the FBO be a different organization than what the manager is. But here, we're fortunate to have the same individual who does both of those. Irv Sweeter just does an incredible job. The airport is extremely well-run. We will have a report next week on the airport from the Airport Commission, and I think that you'll be very pleased when you see the numbers that we've had, the number of flights, the amount of fuel that we've sold, the amount of interest that we've had from young people learning how to fly, things like the pancake breakfasts and that also. So when I first came on council a number of years ago, and we went out and took a look at the airport, and it looked dumpy. It just looked dumpy. You go out there now, it is clean, it's bright, well-maintained. I mean, it looks like a great facility for us to show off here for the city of Waverly. So just a plug for Irv, done an incredible job out there. I think that this is a very worthwhile extension on the agreement that we have with him.
As a non-voting person up here on dais, specifically Lions Club appreciates the efforts that have been put into it as a whole, but then lead up to the pancake breakfast out there here today that goes into it, that's a huge kickback to the community itself and some of the infrastructure that they've put in to support that specific event as well. So it does not go unnoticed, especially by the Lions Club group.
And there's a lot of work that Irv has to do with that. If you've ever been out of the airport and taken a look at the maintenance hangar out there, it is crammed full of aircraft. I mean, they have a reputation for being one of the best maintenance organizations here in the area and perhaps in the state, and they always have planes there that they're working on. And when Lions Club breakfast comes in, they've got to move all of that stuff out, find someplace for it, make sure that it's all tied down, protected. Engine's torn apart, they need to make sure that they don't lose any parts anywhere. So yeah, and from what I understand, that he's very cooperative in doing that.
He wants to do it.
It's a great thing for the city and the airport, for that matter.
Anything further?
I'll just comment that we all got an email just before the meeting from a citizen who wondered if the money that the city invests in the airport is worth it, and I think it's a good reminder to the public that the vast majority of funds that go toward the airport are not from city. They're from federal sources typically, and I'm sure the commission report next year will highlight some of the economic benefits, whether it's for agriculture or training for flight or the business that comes in because Irv is working on planes. So I think, I know I was surprised when I first got on council to attend an Airport Commission meeting and see exactly what it does bring for the community. So that person, I hope, will tune in next week and watch the commission's report.
I hope they do also, because you're correct that a lot of the construction activity out there, the connector, the taxway connector, and the new place where the planes outside the hangar hang away, those are paid about 90% by FFA funds. But also, you'll see in the report next week that the airport is practically self-sufficient. The amount of money that has been subsidized by the city has gone down, 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 and we're now very, very close to the airport actually being sufficient to fund it without city investments. So it's a great thing. I was never all that big a fan of the airport, to tell you the truth, especially when we started working on the runway extension and we had all of those kinds of issues that we had with that, but I've certainly changed my mind on it. I think that they've done a fantastic job, and I really look forward to seeing what kinds of things we can do going forward with it.
Anything else? Hearing nothing. Roll call, Carla.
Bergin.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Peggus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution 23-137 is approved. Brings us to item two, Resolution 23-138, a resolution accepting Living Roadway Trust Fund grant funds. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-138, a resolution accepting Living Roadway Trust Fund LRTF grant funds in the amount of $2,839.96 to be used toward the purchase of a top windshield, back window, and half doors for the Polaris Ranger for the Vegetation Management Division of Leisure Services.
Second.
Motion by Roffey, second by Bofor. Council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Peggus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergin.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution 23-138 is approved. Brings us to item three, the second reading of ordinance 1131, ordinance amending sections of Chapter 82 public property and Chapter 104 public offenses of the Waverly Code of Ordinances.
I will move approval of second reading of ordinance 1131, amending sections of Chapter 82 public property and Chapter 104 public offenses of the Waverly Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Peggus, second by Myers. Council discussion.
So I would like to amend this motion and strike Section 104.40.09, the duty to carry permit to carry weapons. It seems to me that this section does absolutely nothing except muddy the code. It basically says, we don't have the right to regulate firearms, so we're not going to, which I think is completely unnecessary to have in the code, and I'd like removed from the ordinance.
Could you give me that site again?
So Section 104.4.09, duty to carry permit to carry weapons.
Okay.
Which basically says that if you're not required to carry permit that says that we're not actually banning you from carrying a weapon, but since we don't actually have the authority to regulate that, it's a meaningless section of the code. I mean, we're trying to replicate what's in the state's code, and it belongs in the state's code, but it doesn't belong in the city code because it doesn't do anything.
Is there any requirement that we have to put it in there?
There wouldn't be a requirement if you didn't want to put it in there. We usually put it in just to echo the state law so they know what it is, because some people will look for that in ordinances and laws to see if they have a carryout obligation.
I thought it was confusing, because I was confused about the last section, to impose a general prohibition on the otherwise lawful unlicensed carrying or transport. So who's able to carry a weapon without a license?
Everybody.
Everybody. You don't have to have a...
Somebody's banned for some other reason.
Okay. But they don't have to have a permit to carry a gun anymore? Okay.
How is this different than other parts of the Iowa code that we're putting in?
It's the same provision. I just copied it in.
Why, I mean, if we're going to strike this, why not strike other parts of the code that we're putting into our code?
I think I'll speak to it a little bit, but I agree with Brian in the fact that it is something relatively new, and with the change in the state constitution, it doesn't necessarily serve a purpose other than to do what Brian said is muddying the water. That's just, I think Dr. Roffey's was too confusing.
It was muddied for me. Yeah.
Well, last week, we did the same thing. I mean, we amended the ordinance on people under the age of 18, on minors, to be able to work in bars, and we basically cut and paste what was in the state statute into our ordinance, which basically just... So see, someone wants to take a look at who can work in a bar, and they want to look at our city ordinance, they will see that in there rather than having to go to the state statute. So there might be some utility in that.
But I would argue that we have the ability to regulate, like, how alcohol is served and things like that. We don't have the ability to regulate firearms. That is above our authority.
Right.
Chief Purcell, do you have an opinion on this? Since you're in the room.
So I think it goes to what Bill is stating, is that if somebody's looking for that information, it will be there. We do copy and paste and echo what the state law has in our city ordinance. The only difference in this particular case is that if they were in violation of that, we would not use the city ordinance to hold that. Where we could in other, where we mirror the state, we would not charge someone with the city ordinance for weapons violation.
But is there anything in here that they would be in violation of? Because this is basically saying that if it's not explicitly, that if we don't say it's illegal, it's not illegal, is basically what this is saying.
It would have to be restricted for other purposes, and then I haven't read the particular subsection you're looking at, but if they're restricted, we could charge them. But again, we would do that under a federal statute and not a city ordinance.
So this section says, you know, "The availability of professional or non-professional permit to carry weapons under this chapter shall not be construed to impose a general prohibition on the otherwise lawful unlicensed carrying of transport," which basically says this is not making anything illegal. I mean, this shall not be construed to impose a general prohibition. So I can't imagine, I mean, you couldn't charge anyone on this because it's basically saying that it's not illegal. So I'm just, I don't know what this is doing in here.
I wasn't sure why the state did it either, so I decided, we just had a provision there. If we take it out, there's a missing number, and it's just easier to have people understand that that's not being enforced.
If we could make this concept really simple, we've got a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Hearing none.
What the heck.
All in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 By three, so the amendment is on the table for further discussion before a roll call.
Roll call on the amendment?
Roll call on the amendment.
Who are the... No, I'm sorry.
Peggus and Drinkow, as far as I recall.
That was a no.
End matter.
Okay, I'm a little confused as to where we are in the process right now.
So we've had a motion and seconded to basically strike 104.4.09.
To amend, right.
Is the amended motion. Otherwise, the rest of the...
To strike the entire section or to basically strike the amended portion so that it reads as it had before?
No, to strike the entire section. So to strike all of 104.4, put it on it. So not reverting it how it was before, but just removing the entire section.
Yeah, because I don't think we could revert it to where it was before.
No, I don't think it'd be appropriate.
I also think it's an amendment to that section. These are all separate sections that we can do, but we'll have to start it over again for this particular section.
But we're not in a hurry.
Not the rest of them. Yeah, it doesn't matter. We could do that, just paperwork.
So for clarity, am I understanding correctly that if we leave this in here as amended, basically we are mirroring exactly what the state code says?
Yes.
If we take it out, we're not taking away any power or important definition of anything from the city. Is that correct?
Right. Because if you take it out, there is no prohibition against requiring a permit to carry a weapon, except for the specific circumstances where you're barred from carrying weapons.
And I want to make it absolutely clear, I didn't vote no because I think people should be carrying weapons. I mean, I would prefer that that wasn't in here, that the state legislature hadn't passed that bill, and if we could say that you cannot carry a weapon in the city limits of Waverly unless you are a professional or non-professional permit to carry one, I would be 100% in favor of that. My whole thing was just procedural, that everywhere else in our city code, we mirror what the state has. So if somebody is wondering, you know, where to look for a certain provision, and they look for it in the city code, the city code is going to say, this is what you can do in Waverly because this is what the state legislature says we have to let you do. That's my whole reason for doing that. I want to make it absolutely clear that I'm not in favor of actually having that provision in here, but...
But this also means that every time the state code changes, we have to go through the whole rigmarole changing. If we wanted to, we just reference the state code and call it good.
Is there dozens, if we go through city code, would you say is there more than dozens of state codes being replicated into the city code? Because I do see a point where if people are looking for certain things, should they be in city code? And that does kind of make some sense.
You just passed an ordinance that corrected a lot of the section, Chapter 105, because there were a lot of them that were changed. The language has changed in the state. There were different things that were, that I just wanted to have it be the same. And mainly, it's because if we do it as a city charge, there are certain benefits to the fines that we receive. Isn't that correct?
Right. And the other thing I was just thinking about, thank you, was that it sounds confusing, but that is the way the state law is written. Would it cause confusion down the road if somebody's comparing the city ordinance to the state law and say, well, why did we omit that subsection? Is there a meaning to that? And try to read into it why that's not there?
From an efficiency standpoint, I could see people rummaging through the code and not seeing it, and then have to call city hall or come down and interrupt somebody. And I guess I don't see a problem with leaving in, but if there's four votes to strike it, I could go along with that, too.
That's kind of my thought. We have other parts where we've copied the state code, so this is just another copying. It's not, I don't think we have the entire state code in ours because our codebook isn't that big, but we have a lot of sections in there that have parts that pertain to what citizens may be looking for within the city specifically.
And I hear what Brian is saying, because I was thinking the same thing last week when we voted on the minor serving alcohol part of it, that, okay, what happens a couple of years from now, the state legislature changes his mind, and that is amended, and do we have to have somebody sit here every year after the state legislature adjourns and say, okay, now what has changed? We need to change our city ordinance. But that might be just what we have to do. I'm not sure it would be very good to just simply reference the state and say, you know, our ordinance. If you can or cannot do it under state law, you can or cannot do it under the city ordinance. It would cut our ordinances down by a lot.
And so part of my reason for targeting this is, all it is saying is that we don't have, we're not imposing any sort of ban.
Right.
Which we couldn't do anyway.
Right.
So I mean, that's what, I don't know, raises my ire. I mean, we couldn't if we wanted to, so why do we have to draw attention to the fact that, you know, we're basically powerless to do anything?
We do that all the time, right? Like fireworks sales.
Yes.
So we point out all the time how powerless we are, next to the state legislature. So I just wish that things were written so you could understand them better, and maybe, you know, just say, our city ordinance follows the current state code.
So if the law does change, and there is required ability to carry, have to have permits for certain things, and maybe not everything, and maybe it's very, you have a place to put it.
You still have that section.
I mean, really, because people do look for those kinds of things.
You still have to add a section. It's the same process to add a section as it is to amend here, so...
It'd be really nice if it just said, reference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
Well, we do that with traffic violations because those don't change that often. It's much easier to use the same number, so that makes it simpler. Here, we don't use the same number because we're not using the section 724.5. We have our own section. So it's...
But you're referencing 724.5.
Yeah, because that's the identical state provision, right? But in the traffic code, you use the same numbers that the state does, the same last three numbers. So it makes a little difference because you can just match them up. And we like to keep them local in those, when we can, with the simple misdemeanors. It's easier for people to, we can deal with it, we get a little bit more money from the revenue that comes in from that, so...
Right, but those are things where you're breaking a law. This is basically saying that you're not breaking a law.
All right. So on the amended motion.
Okay. Once more.
We're voting to approve the amendment.
Are we voting to approve the amendment?
So now we're going to approve the amendment.
We haven't already approved the amendment.
No.
We have not approved the amendment.
We amended the original motion to approve this. That's what the first vote was. Now we're actually voting on the amended version.
So did we approve the amendment?
No.
Okay.
We proposed, we moved, we moved an amendment to be considered.
To be considered, and now we have to vote on it. Correct?
Right. That's what we're doing now.
So, sorry, not to beat a dead horse. We're voting to accept what Brian proposed, or we're voting to accept what's here?
The first...
We're voting to eliminate the thing.
The action is no longer active.
Okay.
Due to Brian's action.
Okay.
Roll call, Carla.
Peggus.
No.
Myers, excuse me.
No.
Roffey.
No.
Schneider.
No.
Bofor.
No.
Bergin.
Yes.
Drinkow.
No.
Vote of six to one. The second reading of ordinance 1131 does not pass. Where does it go from here, then?
Now we vote on it.
We do the second reading, though.
Correct.
Because we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So you were just doing on that particular section.
Okay. So then, on the second reading of ordinance 1131, I need a motion for that, then.
I've still got mine on the floor.
Still on the floor.
Yeah. Still on the floor.
Yeah. We have a motion.
Okay. Gotcha. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergin.
No.
Bofor.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
And Peggus.
Yes.
Vote of six to one. The second reading of ordinance 1131 is approved. Item four, Resolution 23-139, a resolution approving contract and certificate of insurance from Kurt Heisinger Monument. and certificate of insurance from Kurt Heisinger Monument Restoration for the Cemetery Monument Restoration twenty-three, twenty-four, phase five project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-three dash one thirty-nine, approving contract and certificate of insurance from Kurt Heisinger Monument Restoration of Jefferson City, Missouri, for the Cemetery Monument Restoration twenty-three, twenty-four, phase five project, in the not-to-exceed amount of $6,000 for up to sixty stones, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Vote by Bergen, second by Cangis, council discussion.
I just had a question about whether this bid is realistic. It's much lower than the other bid, and I just, I don't know anything about how much it costs to fix a tombstone. I don't know, Paul, is that why you're here?
Sure. I was hoping.
Paul, Public Service or Public Grounds Manager.
I tried.
So I was a bit surprised, too, in the bid opening, seeing it come in at that rate, a hundred dollars a stone. I think the person possibly wanted to get their foot in the door, maybe, with that offer to do more at a hundred dollars each, in hopes maybe we made it worth it, because I don't see if we do twenty-one, how they make money, but I'm not their business either. So there's quite a bit of difference on the bids, the two we got.
Have we used this person before?
We have not.
And have we seen any references or any work that he's done?
Yes, the bid packet always requires at least three references, and all of those are checked out. I think we actually had four.
Oh, okay.
And I did a little bit of snooping around on Google.
Okay.
And this is specifically stone repair and stone movement, right? The staff is doing all the power washing?
Yeah, we, and in our, in our bid, we always include cleaning of the particular stone. So we, for instance, we go, the process would be go into block six, and start on one row, and find the worst twenty, or the worst thirty-one, just kind of in that block, where we were learning to kind of stay localized, and not spread it around. And then each one of those gets, it's going to be like a straighten, because it's settled one way, or maybe it's a reset, because it's fallen off completely, or it's a repair, because maybe it's a tablet that's broken into three pieces, all slightly different techniques to fix it, or refurbish it a little bit. So each one of those in the bid packet, it goes through what to do with each one of those, and I think this one had twenty-one on it. And at the end of each one of those, it says clean. So that way, when the contractor comes here, they touch that stone, whether it's straightened, leveled, repair it, they clean it. We hope it's good to go for a while.
So the stuff you saw online, and the references, all checked out?
Yes, everybody's super happy with the work.
Well, I mean, you're going to do the twenty or so first, anyway, complete look and follow-up, I would think, so it's a pretty small, small amount to try the vendor out, anyway, I would think, so. And pleased with what we've had so far, so it's kind of nervous to go to a different direction.
Well, and this would be our third vendor, because we had someone did it for the first two years, and then we had someone different for the next two.
Third vendor, different the first, kind of, kind of the first two, they didn't really do much work the first year, became, taught us a few things, cleaned some stuff. Yeah, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Both four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, resolution twenty-three dash one thirty-nine is approved. Brings us to section J, reports from boards and commissions. Item one, monthly financials of August twenty-three. Item two is planning zoning commission minutes of August third, twenty-three. Item three is the Brainerd Equity and Diversity Commission minutes of August eighth, twenty-three. Item four is the Brainerd Waverly Law Enforcement Board minutes of August eighth, twenty-three. And item five is the Waverly Public Library Board of Trustees minutes for August eighth of twenty-three. Section K is staff updates, I understand Sarah from the library has an update for us.
I do, just to let you know that tomorrow is the day that the bid documents go out for the library's addition and renovation project. So hopefully, we'll have a number of interested bidders, and then October tenth is the bid opening date, and so later in October, you will see a contract award come, probably at the same time that we do the public hearing. And then the project is set to commence on November seventh, so we're still on track to do that. Just wanted to give you that update.
Sounds great. Any questions?
I just had a quick question, what's the status of the bookmobile?
The bookmobile has not arrived yet. We did receive photos from the vendor, just within the last week, and it's looking beautiful inside and out, but they are still waiting on a backup camera, is my understanding. And so I don't have a projected date yet, but we're hoping very soon.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to section L, city council comments. Myers.
A few weeks ago, I mentioned that I had attended an informational meeting that the Brainerd County nine-one-one board was hosting a series of around the counties, around the county, and I just wanted to reiterate, the board of supervisors will be voting next Tuesday morning, they will have a public hearing at their meeting at nine o'clock, and then we'll be voting whether to issue a bond to fund upgrade of emergency services communications for our county, and I think this is a really, really important thing. My eyes were really opened at that meeting, I had no idea our communications were in such bad shape. So please, think about reaching out to your board of supervisors and telling them that you want them to vote yes on that bond.
Thank you. Mr. Bergen.
So I'm happy to report, we had a very successful Iowa Geocachers hike and seek this past weekend. We had over sixty participants, had a very good time. Very thankful for kind of the Waverly hospitality that they experienced. Second thing is, the Waverly Oktoberfest is coming up, and they are looking for volunteers. So if you're interested in helping out in a big community event, whether you're serving beer, or helping people check in, or supervising the playstations, bounce house, they're looking for volunteers. It's a good way to get yourself a T-shirt and a free pass in, so consider doing that. And finally, anyone who wants to discuss city council business, please join me at Brainerd Avenue Brewery after the meeting for a beer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schneider.
Nothing to add.
All right. Mr. Drinkow.
Nothing to add for me, either.
I was going to mention Oktoberfest, but Brian stole my thunder. It's the only time of the year you will see Brian and me in German costume, so.
I invested my lederhosen in the meeting.
Yeah, it's worth the trip, so.
Nothing for me.
The rule?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing? Mr. Cangis.
Well, I would wear my lederhosen, but the last time I wore it, I was like nine or ten. So I needed to invest in a more size-appropriate.
Lederhosenforyou.com.
Mine was authentic, it was actually from the Bay area. So nothing for me.
All right. Only comment I have to note is, reminder, this is National Rail Safety Week, so careful of rail crossings and trespassing concerns and the like. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
Vote by Cangis, second by Bergen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.